There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item three, approval of the meeting minutes from the September twenty-second, twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two meeting. Anyone have any corrections or notes to be added to that? It's a good meeting.
Move the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Thank you, ladies. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Minutes approved.
I abstain. I was not here for the meeting.
Thank you for that. All right, with that, moving on to item number four. We have a public hearing and concept plan for Hidden Pines Residential Development, East Bethel Boulevard and one hundred and ninety-eighth Avenue with TH Construction of Anoka Inc. Stephanie?
Tonight, the planning commission is asked to hold a public hearing and review the concept plan for a ten-unit rural residential development. And we have the plat up on the screen for you. The property is located in the rural residential zoning district. And within the rural residential district, the minimum watt sizes are two acres. All lots within the proposed Hidden Pines meet the two-acre minimum watt size. And they also meet the required two-hundred-foot width at the right-of-way setback line. The development will be accessed off of East Bethel Boulevard, County Road fifteen. Therefore, Anoka County Transportation Department is required to review the plat. The developer is required to abide by the requirements of the county transportation department. Internal street will be constructed to city standards, and a temporary cul-de-sac will be required, the possible extension of the road for the future development to the west. The concept plan was placed on the October eleventh, twenty-twenty-two Parks Commission meeting. However, that meeting was canceled because of lack of quorum, so it will be added to the November agenda. Staff is recommending cash and move land, as Parks Plan doesn't support a park in this area of the city. Next step is, based on the feedback received on the concept plan, the developer will modify the plans and make application for the preliminary plat. So at this time, staff's requesting Planning Commission to hold the public hearing, take feedback on the proposed plan, and informally advise the developer on the adjustments. And the developer is here to answer any questions he may have.
Great. Thank you, Stephanie. With that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak on this matter, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Yep, right up here, please. Thank you for coming.
Kathryn Crutchmire, one-nine-seven-three-nine, East Bethel Boulevard. I have questions, things like, how many trees are going to get cut down for this? How much is this going to affect the neighborhood? Is this going to affect any other zoning things where the houses that are already there are? What do we, I mean, so they're going to build a road basically right across from my house? So, I don't care about these things. I don't want to change the rural feel we've got now, and I worry that a development where typically developments cut down all the trees and then build a house. I wouldn't want that.
Okay, great. We'll be sure to answer, answer the questions when we're, when the public hearing's over. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Before discussion, do we have a motion?
Can we hear from the developer first, or do you want?
Certainly. If the developer would like to speak on it.
Yeah.
A point of order.
Certainly.
I'm just checking because I believe this is just an agenda item for information. We're not really requested to make a motion here to send this forward, are we not?
That's correct. Yes, it's just gathering recommendations.
So I don't, I don't think we necessarily need a motion for the discussion.
Great. We can go right into discussion then. Yeah, thank you, Randy.
I would like to hear how many trees they're going to cut down, try to save.
Certainly. Then, for the matter of discussion purposes, would the developer like to come up while we discuss and answer any questions? Thank you.
My name's Anthony Hannon. My office at six-seventeen East Main Street, Suite Number Three, Anoka. And as far as the trees go, there's just one strip of pines down the middle, otherwise the entire area, if you looked at it, is wide open. So we pretty much cut through where the, the road will go. We'll try to save the, all the pine trees there if we can, but I don't know exactly how the lots and the, and the trees line up to where if there's going to be a house and there's, the trees might have taken a few, but I mean, most of the people, if they've got trees, they're not going to cut them down. If we're going to build a new house, just what we have to to put the house in there, so.
Yep, certainly. Thank you for addressing that. I was going to ask, Stephanie, do we have the aerial image? We might be able to jump to just to show for clarification. I know in our packet, if, ma'am, for the one who came up and spoke, I know in our packet it shows an overlay when you look at the aerial. He is correct. There is just kind of one strip that runs the north, the south portion of it. And it looks like just that piece of where it narrows would be the area that, based on what he's described, that they would be taking down.
Is there the mess basic already clear?
No, I don't, based on what you're describing, it doesn't sound like it.
They just have to have the road easement through there, so typically, you know, maybe eighty feet wide or so, hundred feet. You've got to get the ditches stuffed in there, then the road, so that swath through there would be taken down. And then just, when they're building the house, if the lot line ends up like on the one side of the trees, the trees are probably sixty feet wide, or something fifty, you might have to take a few down for the house, but that would be pretty much it. Otherwise, the whole development's pretty much a field, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, as mu- and as much as we all love to keep our, our rural feel here in East Bethel, it's, you know, it's not, it's not the role of the city or the commissions and/or city councils to dictate what landowners can and can't sell and when developers come in. But we do try to do our best to make sure that the guidelines that are set forth are, help keep that same rural feel within the neighborhoods that do get developed as they, as they come. So hence why we have some larger lot sizes, more, more frontage right of way.
Yeah, very large lots are first.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, I was going to say, the average on these look like they were pretty.
Yeah, they're very nice.
Pretty hefty. So yeah, it looks like it'd be a nice development and even if expanded on, it looks like it would continue.
Yes.
In a similar manner.
And I know she did ask a question about the zoning on other properties. Will anything change and it won't? It's just all, all will still stay rural residential.
Yep, which again has the two-acre minimum. And again, these lots are averaging out over two and a half, or at two and a half. Hundred-and-eighty-ninth?
Ninety-nine.
Well, one-ninety-eighth.
Oh, Lexington, excuse me. Okay, there it is.
Yep.
Yep, right there. So from what we see in the overlay where the road comes in.
Well, it's probably right in here somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come on over right here.
Yeah.
So there will be some of these. They're pretty sparse.
But it's not going to be directly across from her driveway where she's going to worry about headlights coming directly into her house.
Nope, she's the one down, yeah.
That's, that's mine.
So the more trees you cut down there, it does affect.
Yeah.
Really the only place the road goes, yeah. That's pretty much where the road would have to go. So the neighbor there on, let's see, on the south side, right now, it's kind of overgrown, that it's protected from kind of any sound. It's, yeah, you're going to be putting it in more approach there for them to protect that. We weren't planning on there being anything more.
Sorry, it, for.
What is it, for right actions, we really don't have the property that actually needs that.
So it, sir, if I, unfortunately for, for the recording, when it's not into the mic, I almost can almost never hear it. There was an audience, audience member asking about the buffering with, with the trees there. And you were, what were you saying on it, just so it's?
Trees actually will go, that are there existing will pretty much go right up to the road.
Yep.
Without, you know, the ditches will have to be in there.
Yeah, so again, mi- minimal effect as much as can be for what needs to be there for the road.
Yes.
Yeah, so. Sorry, if, if we need to reopen the public forum, we can, because, for discussion purposes, but it is closed at the moment. Do we want to reopen it for residents?
Here the chair.
Anybody have any objection to that?
No.
Okay. I'll go ahead and reopen the public forum at the moment. Sir, if you want to come up and state your name and address and ask, ask your questions, just so it's formal.
Best to get the questions out of the way now.
Yep, yeah, best to get it out now, because that's what we're here for, is to give them direction.
Mark Johnson, one-ninety-eight oh-seven, East Bethel Boulevard, that's right there. So as I understand it, looking at the plat.
And again, if you could try to speak into the microphone when you, when you do. Yeah.
I'm select on it.
So as I understand it, then the road is going to be going right here, right along that edge, is that correct?
Pretty much.
Yeah, right along that. So yeah, that was one of our concerns too, was headlights, obviously, with ours or with Crutchmire's there. But it looks like you've kind of split the difference there between those two houses, is that right? And then the only other concern I had was this barrier, this sound barrier here along that road, or along in that area. It looks like the road is going to be a little farther that direction, and so maybe that's not going to be fine. There's only ten lots. Do you, is there a start plan? Do you know when it's going to be? Next, middle of summer, maybe. Depends on the economy. Yeah. But probably after the winter sometime.
All right, thank you. While the public hearing's still open, any other questions from residents? I'll go ahead and close the public forum again. Thank you for your questions, and thank you for your added information. Further discussion?
I have a little bit of concern about what the neighbors are saying about the road and headlights, because it's going to be awful. It'll, it won't affect the Crutchmires as much as the house next to it, where that road is. Unless it's right along that tree line, but then it's going to have to curve in if there's a house right on the corner there. And actually, there's not.
But, but there's not.
Now that I look at the plat, there's not.
I, I was waiting for you to finish to let you know about the ghost plotting.
Let me slide it up. There isn't, okay. All right, so yeah, that does work. All right. Thank you. The lots are programmed.
Any other discussion or any other direction we want to give toward the development or developer?
I just, I just had a question about process here. When will this go before Anoka County for their input on alterations or approval of this, this property?
Once the concept plan, then typically the developer will turn it over to Anoka County to review the preliminary plat.
Okay.
Still open, or did you close it?
I, I did close it again, but. Sorry, we're, we're here to get questions out of the way.
I just want to know, once these plans have been approved, and I'm concerned most about that driveway moving over either way towards us or the other way. Once it's been approved as is, the road has to go that, at that spot, right? It's not like, well, we decided we're going to move it over.
Correct. It would require coming back before, multiple committees, before that would be the case. Yep, no, again, we're, we want to make sure people's questions are answered and everybody understands what the project is. With that, since there's no motions needed, Stephanie, do you feel we've given enough of what they need to move forward with?
I have what I need, and this will be heard at the November fourteenth City Council meeting.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will move on to item five, which will be a public hearing and preliminary plot and planned unit development master plan amendment for the Elevage EB Second Edition, one-hundred-and-eighty-seventh and Highway sixty-five Elevage EB Holdings LLC.
The developers submitted the second edition, addition for the planned unit development known as Elevage EB. The second addition consists up to, excuse me, two-hundred-and-twelve townhomes, which will include a private clubhouse, pool, which is private, public trails, and there will be a lot there for future commercial development. The development will be served by sewer and water. There has been some information out there given to the public stating that the existing city sewer and water system does not have the capacity for the development. So I just wanted to share this with you, that that is untrue. The sewer capacity, right now, we have a maximum of four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand gallons per day. Currently, we're operating at about sixteen percent. And with the Elevage buildout, and that includes the future commercial and all the residential, it'll bring the operating capacity at about twenty-three percent, so eighty-one thousand gallons per day. As for city water, that's pretty much an endless supply. We have the tower there to pump the water and fill up the tower. But, yeah, right now, we currently have seventy-seven connections on city sewer and water. Forty-seven of them are from Viking Preserve. Thirty are from the existing commercial, which includes the apartments and the senior living facility. So Elevage will add up to two-hundred-and-twelve new connections with the townhome community.
Thank you, Stephanie, for that point of clarification.
So the property is zoned mixed-use, and the, and so that's what their zoning code is. It is zoned mixed-use, and the land use is part of the comprehensive plan, and that land use is also mixed-use. So this project is in compliance with the adopted comprehensive plan and the city code. The twenty-forty East Bethel Comprehensive Plan was adopted by a five-zero vote by the City Council on December fourteenth of twenty-twenty, and it was also approved by the Met Council. The approved comprehensive plan shows this property as a mixed-use, as I stated. Here I have a slide up. This is from Chapter Three Land Use Plan, page fourteen, from the approved comprehensive plan. So this area's uses are for small lots, single-family, townhomes, apartments, multiplex, and commercial. The minimum requirements for it include sidewalks, paths, and streets that have good access. And the allowed density, so how many houses per acre are allowed, can be anywhere from two-point-two-five houses to thirty homes per acre. And then one thing I also wanted to clarify with this is their talk author, as well as this development is a high-density development. And actually, density development is defined in our comprehensive plan. And the proposed density does meet the requirements identified in the comprehensive plan and the zoning code. The mixed-use residential designation allows for, again, two-point-two-five to thirty units per acre. And just doing simple calculation, the development excluding the future commercial lot, the outlot, is forty-three-point-five-seven acres with two-hundred-and-twelve units being proposed. And just doing simple math of two-hundred-and-twelve divided by the forty-three-point-five-seven equals four-point-eight-six units per acre for the Elevage East Bethel Second Edition. Again, our density is defined by the approved twenty-forty comprehensive plan, and I have it listed here. Low density is two-point-two-five to four houses per acre. The medium density is four to twelve units per acre. Going back to this development, it's calculating out to four-point-eight-six units per acre. So this development overall is on the very low end of a medium-density residential development. Again, as defined by the approved twenty-forty comprehensive plan. So here, the development, you can see, is going to be accessed by, oh, sorry. The development is going to be accessed, two accesses from Sand Hill Parkway. So we have one access point, a southern access point, and then the northern access point. All internal streets will be public, so they'll be city-owned. With the exception of the alleyways that are between the townhomes, those will be maintained by a property management company. The right-of-way will be sixty feet for all public streets with a thirty-one street width from curb to curb with parking on one side, five-foot sidewalks, and a six-foot boulevard. Maintenance of the five-foot sidewalks within the development for snow removal and repair. That will be a responsibility from a property management company as well. The developer and staff have met to discuss the entrance points heading east into the development. There has been an agreement, and it will be defined that the developer will be installing turn lanes at the time the commercial lot is developed. The turn lane configuration and locations will be reviewed and approved by staff and City Council, and Planning Commission will also review it prior to reconstruction in the future commercial buildings. And that will be all taken care of, the wording with that, and the master PUD agreement for this second phase. The landscape plan, it's quite extensive. So here I have, all we did is I just made, or we highlighted where the trees are going to be within the development. So the development, right now, is creating about twenty acres of open space, which is fifty-five percent of the lot. And with that, he's going to have a lot of vegetation, so, you know, with trees, there's going to be four-hundred-and-eleven trees that he's putting in. There's going to be ornamental trees. There's going to be numerous shrubs and also perennials in this development. And again, that will be all taken care of in the PUD master plan for Phase Two. North is this way.
No, you had that in reverse.
Do I? Oh, I do. Sorry, I'm wearing my glasses on. North is this way.
Yeah, QuickTrip would be in the northwest corner of that.
Yeah, so Future QuickTrip will be going right here on this lot. Again, the landscape plan with the trees. And then this is the open space plan that I wanted to show. Again, the, the plat's approximately forty-three-point-five-seven acres. There is about twenty acres, or fifty-five percent of it is green space and open space. So we highlighted the open space just for an easier visual on that. And then forty, forty-five percent of it will be hard surface, which will be all the homes and streets and sidewalks. Also with this, on March seventh of twenty-twenty-one, actually, the Parks Commission took a look at this plat. And what they had decided at that time is to take cash and move of parkland. So that will be something that will actually be brought back to them in November to discuss a little bit more at length. And then also, as part of the comprehensive plan, one of the goals is to create and protect an interconnected system of athletic areas with parks and trails and green space through the city. As part of this project, there will be the private clubhouse and the pool to serve the townhome development. However, there's also going to be, see it shown here, there's going to be trails through the development that will be public developments connecting up to existing sidewalks and trails. And then also what will happen in the future, as part of this plat, is there will be trail easement heading to the east, and there will also be trail easement heading to the north to connect up to future, future developments in those areas of the residential elements. So next, we have the architectural design and the townhome layout. So this is just showing a, a kind of a, a sketch of the types of townhomes and such that will be and how it will be laid out. So there will be about nine row-style buildings that will include two bedrooms and rear-loading through an alleyway, two-car garages. There's going to be up to sixteen four-unit buildings that will include two bedrooms, oversized one-car garages to fit trucks, and a parking spot in the driveway. There's also twelve six-unit homes ranging from two to three bedrooms with one to two oversized garages to fix trucks. And then also, there's one unit building with, one two-unit building with three bedrooms with a two-car garage. And this is a picture of the clubhouse. So each of the structures, including this clubhouse, will consist of white lapped siding with board and batten, natural stone, and black window trim and fascia. So up here, you have the material board, and then a photo of what the clubhouse will look like. And here you have the layout of inside the clubhouse, so there's going to be a, a community room, and there'll also be a locker room with offices and a gym area as well. And patio leading out to the private pool area. And here's just the clubhouse elevations. And the next, we have the row townhomes, again, the same type of materials as clubhouse. They'll have the white lapped siding with the board and batten, natural stone, and black window trim and fascia. There's a street perspective on it, and the overall elevation, so you see the rear side of it, all of them are rear-loading garages, and there'll be an alleyway there. So it's off of the street where they'll access the garages. And then here's the six-unit buildings, elevations. And we have the four-unit and front-loaded townhomes. So at this time, staff, just so you know, staff has met to discuss staff comments and questions regarding the plat with the developer. His city attorney is engineer. And we'll continue working with them to get everything ironed out and make sure everything's buttoned up, including the agreements are done, that sort of thing, prior to going to final plat. So at this time, staff's requesting the commission to hold the public hearing, discuss, and recommend approval of the Elevage EB Second Edition, a medium-density planned unit development with the conditions set forth in the following resolutions, twenty-twenty-two-dash-seven-one, which is approving the planned unit development master plan amendment, and then also Resolution twenty-twenty-two-dash-seventy-two, resolution approving the preliminary plat for Elevage EB Second Edition. I'm done with my presentation, and now we have the developer, Mr. Wersted is here, and he's also going to present to give you additional information.
Great. Thank you, and we'll have the presentation before the public hearing.
Corey Bersted here, President of Elevage Development Group, 10901 Baltimore Street, Blaine, Minnesota. Stephanie, thank you, Commissioner. We've been through, we've been, we presented in, you know, a couple of years back, you know, discussing the plan as we worked with Quick Trip and were starting to, you know, the Sand Hill Park, right? The road, when it got kind of delivered and stuff, kind of made us take pause for a timing perspective. Even like Quick Trip started next, you know, they're starting it next year, as you know. And so as that's taken place, we've watched the market change, obviously dramatically, in the last year or so. We redid new market studies, and basically what we've come back with, with our market, you know, with Market Advisors, which does a lot of all of our work, has recommended that we go more in a townhome approach versus the single-family, which is what you guys saw, you know, the commission saw.
Original master plan.
Yeah, original plan, kind of back. And we started working on more of a kind of a cluster development, as they call it. You know, I wanted to try to get the roadways, you know, not to make it this like raceway of a road through with just lots, you know? I live in one of those neighborhoods, and I know what it's like, and it's just a complete raceway. So we're trying to build kind of a modern farmhouse look for the townhouse development. And we think we've kind of, there's a couple other developments in town that have, around the Twin Cities that have done these and have a great deal of success and well-received by the community, and so we kind of took this approach. We hired a different architecture firm to take this on, a different civil engineer to kind of relook at how we did all this. And we feel like we've got the right approach now going forward. The concept plan of 212 units along with the outlot of the mixed-use, or the, you know, the, you know, what we hope to be commercial, you know, down the line. As a developer and as a commission, you guys will understand, we need rooftops in order to attract what everyone wants me to do for the, for the, for the commercial aspect of it. So it's kind of one or the other, and we feel like this is a good balanced approach. This is, this is a project, we're in the multifamily arena as a developer. We own and develop and continue to do that right now as well. And we partner with other management companies that, that work really well with us. And we, we kind of have that identified as to who would help oversee this, and they're, they're one of the best in the state of Minnesota. Stephen Scott Management would oversee this site with us and stuff. But this is a product we're going to probably do in two phases. We're probably split in half, not all at one, you know, at once, as we watch the market. The market's changing dramatically, you know, you know, day by day right now. But this is a project that we feel like, you know, private clubhouse, the community feel, there's a demand for it. Or even our market report asked us to do it in two phases, you know? So we're trying to, we try to tend to follow those things pretty closely. But we feel like this is a high-demand product right now. That's, gives people an opportunity to kind of not be in an apartment, you know? That's not what we, you know, as apartment developers, this is, this is not like what we're looking to bring to the city of East Bethel. This is a little more of a, as someone that grew up in Ham Lake, you know, this is a little more of a world feel, you know, for.
A different approach.
Yeah, absolutely. So in terms of the commercial aspect too, because I know a lot of people ask, and I told staff this too, we showed 16 of the four-unit houses on the backside of that lot. It's not our intention to build that today. It's there just for us to know that we could build another buffer. Hopefully, five acres worth of commercial in this location there is kind of our goal. We'll, as this plan becomes more, obviously more public, and, and hopefully, we'll, we'll get interest knowing, people will be able to know what we're doing, that some will come in and we'll have a little bit more of a clean slate that they could work on the five acres and determine how all that lays out. So but our, our goal is to kind of, you know, we have a north and a south commons align on the plan that we called out. We would essentially build right to about the last set of the road, townhomes first, the first section. We'd do the clubhouse first, we'd do all that, that first half, and then, and then, as time permits, would roll right into the second phase. Our also intention would be that we would do all of the site work at once. So the roadways, everything would get in place. So, but in terms of construction, we would take it down in two phases, so. I'm here to, happy to answer any questions or wait till after the public hearing. But, you know, we're, we're, went a long time, you know, stakeholder in this property for quite a while, and also our other partner, the Chinese family's been, you know, it's held in their family for, you know, 30-plus years. I have maybe even more, you know, the story's always changed with them, so how long they've had it, but it's been forever. So, and like I said, we've got the first phase done with Quick Trip, just kind of, you know, we got the right type brand that's going to come in, a good company, that's, you know, they've been, they were wonderful to work with. And then we still have a lot that's right behind Quick Trip as well that we've planned to develop too in the commercial aspect. We kind of know what we want to do, we'll just leave it at that right now, and it's, and hopefully, it'll be a nice service that'll fit with our neighborhood. So with that, I give it back.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation, and you're interested in the city, we do definitely appreciate it. Yeah, I'll have you wait to answer questions till after we close the public hearing, just so we can try to get all feedback done in a concise manner, so thank you again for that. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, speak on this matter, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Don't anybody run over anybody else, we can do this in order. With that being said, seeing no additional interest, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Before discussion. We should have a motion.
I'll make a motion for open discussion. I'm not going to make a resolution at this point, I'm just want you open for discussion.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor for discussion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Can I aye, or do I have to abstain since I wasn't here? Aye.
Thank you. You were here for the motion, to discuss the item. Karen, thank you very much for joining, for, for showing up. Just quick catch you up, sorry, Randy, if you don't mind, just to catch her up. Item number four was just discussion item to give direction, and we had some feedback from residents, and they were able to get what they needed and move on, and they just did a presentation on basically what we've had in the packet, and you're caught up to speed. With that, Randy, do you want to start the discussion, since you had the motion?
Yes. My, my first question, I guess, is to Stephanie. Looking at how this is laid out, I mean, is there any concerns about the city taking care of the snow removal in the wintertime? It looks to me like the section down here on that end, closest to the cul-de-sac or to the roundabout, they look pretty square, so I'm just, I'm just curious, has there been any concern about snow removal for this project?
I'm happy to, we, we just had a meeting, actually, with, with, with staff, yeah, with staff. We discussed, you know, kind of just who's going to do what and responsibilities that would take place. And luckily, my old, my old youth friend Nate Ashford, growing up, explained to me, you know, what they would do, what we need to do as a private development, so we'll be taking care of, we're going to have a lot of snow removal in terms of what we're going to have to manage with all the alleyways and stuff. But they felt, the biggest question we had is inside this development, you know, snow emergency, there's no parking overnight, that kind of stuff. And we kind of talked through essentially that we would, you know, go into like a snow emergency effect, you know, move to one side or the other, and we'd have to kind of deal with that. We also said we'd have to look at it maybe after year one as part of our development agreement and come back and assess, you know, how did it go in the first year, what changes need to be made? We talked about sidewalks, not doing back a curb, some of this, you know, kind of separation, because when the snow comes up and gets pushed out, you know, who's going to manage the sidewalks? We would take care of the sidewalks. So we, we discussed the whole process, I think that's going to be kind of flushed out in our developers' agreement too with responsibility. But, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's always a challenge in these types of developments. But I mean, I think it's more important of the type of management they have on site that, you know, will determine the success that, you know, and will work, obviously, closely with the city, so. But they felt, I mean, at least my, my impression was that they could handle this. And I think it was just more the, the snow emergency was just more like how, you know, how do we do it with residents? Like, you know, you're going to take it, you know, like, so just, this is a bigger development, obviously, with a lot more density in terms of people, you know, being all in one area. So just trying to figure out how to manage it, the fact that we'll be taking care of all the alleyways ourselves and stuff, I think will, will certainly help a lot, so.
Right, so my understanding is you're going to be taking care of the, the alleys and the sidewalks, and the city will be taking care of the streets themselves?
The main street, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I don't know if it's called all the large roads.
So, so, so again, to my question.
There's no concerns.
Staff is not concerned, okay.
No, no concerns, we discussed that.
Topic switch. My understanding is, is that the clubhouse and the pool will be exclusive for this development, and it will not be public, is that correct?
That is 100% correct.
Okay, I just, I want to get that out there so that people understand.
This is, if you live there, this is your place of refuge, not, this is not open to the public.
And you're encouraged to come and move in.
Yes, you can, to enjoy the amenities, yes. Yes, correct.
So then my other question would go along the lines of, I mean, as somebody who possibly might be interested in moving into these units, will there be an association fee, a homeowner's association?
It would be, no, it'd be your, your monthly rent would be, would be taking care of all of that. That would be part of the, just, just like as if you lived in an apartment, you'd pay your monthly rent, and that includes everything accompanying on the property for us to manage on the entire site, so.
So then how much, now that you've brought up the fact that these are rental units, are all of these going to be rental units, or, okay?
Yes, they are not for sale right now, today.
Detached apartments. To coin a different term.
This is a much, much more common type of use, you know, now in the Twin Cities, definitely, in our own country for that matter, so. These are very nice units, they're very spacious too, they're not small, they're not tiny, and they, they're a pretty good size.
Well, it looks like you put a lot of work in, into the presentation, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, we've, we've spent a lot of time, you know, and then, like I said, making a kind of a switch from the raceway and just, you know, 40, 40-home run, just, it just didn't, it, it was really not, and, and the truth of, truth of it is there's a lot of dirt work here. There's a lot, substantial, like 280,000 cubic yards. It's a lot.
So, bringing in or taking out?
Bringing it. So there's a lot, there's a lot of stuff going on here in order to make this site work properly, so.
We saw Quick Trip, and they made the comment that they had to let their pads settle for about a year.
Little different scenario, because they have gas tank, you know, they have different standards as Quick Trip. We're doing slab-on-gravel, we're not doing basements here, so what.
So that's not going to affect you in this scenario?
The challenges of what they do, they just, it, for, for Quick Trip, they, they have a very, you know, set way of doing all of their sites and just the testing and stuff, and where the tanks are located, they just said, we're going to let it settle, you know, let the surcharge, you know, take place for a year. They kind of fit with their construction schedule.
It's pretty highly regulated when it comes to the gas stations.
Didn't want the tanks to just pop up out of the ground.
Yeah, there's enough Pete there.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, that was my questions at this point.
Thank you, Randy.
Are any of the townhomes single level?
No, as of right now, no.
That's what I was seeing, but I wanted to make sure I was seeing the right thing, thank you.
For future expansions, as you talk about in, in, beyond second phase, would that be ever something you guys might consider?
I mean, there's, there's some lineup, but, you know, as of right now.
Other, other areas that could be future.
The more important thing for us was having the right mix of stuff throughout the development. But as of today, our design, it does not, we do not have that today. As much as I know, they're high demand, very much high, absolutely, yeah. Just in order to fit, you know, to get the right mix and to make the actual project work financially, it's got to be a balance.
Yep.
That's where we ended up with, so.
Are there some similar developments like that around here that, that we might be able to, to drive to?
You know, one that I'm a big fan of, Sundance in Woodbury is really nice, right off of 94, very nice project. I believe Timberland developers did it. One of our multifamily builders had me go tour it. That, that does a lot of their work, and it was, it was quite, it was quite nice. And it was, it was full within like a month, and it was very, very successful, and it was, you know, high, very high demand right now, so. And I know someone, actually, one of our actual construction project managers lives there, and it's beautiful, there's a really successful one that was just done in Hugo. Jack Pine was a very successful project that we, you know, kind of like, we're kind of watching until, we've talked to cities, you know, like how it'd go. And so far, those are, those are two that you could reference, that I think that are nice projects that fit more of what we're going to do. Sundance is, you know, is, is really close to like what I consider like what we're doing here a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
I have a comment, and that is, in general, I have a bias against this type of development where I see cookie cutter things springing up all over the place. But that being said, looking at what you've done with the design and the architectural standards and whatnot, it's, to me, at the high end of what is being done in this type of development today, in today's world. And so I appreciate the thought and that you put into it.
Well, I, well, I appreciate your comment, Commissioner. As someone said to me today in a meeting, I was in an interior design meeting, a gal that we worked with closely, she said, "It's great when Cory's here." And then everyone else in the room's like, "Yeah, because he spends too much money." You know, so, well, you know, a lot of times, because, you know, I'm in the hospitality business as well, and, you know, it, it needs to feel right, and, you know, and, and, and we, sometimes developers come through and they just build something quick and they're in and out.
Right.
We really don't go out, you know, we kind of tend to, you know, we want to be proud of the work that we do and the stuff that, you know, that we've done so far, I think speaks for itself. I mean, even an example, the Marriott Blaine we built, I mean, Marriott absolutely did not like me because I, I changed all of their architectural standards and bottom on every single ankle. They wanted me to make it look like the standard old everything, so even from the windows to everything else. And I think DJR has done a nice job to listen to me about, like, we need to, you know, without, you know, also outpricing ourselves out of the market too, there's a balance. And, but, I mean, they came back right away with, they hit the, the note that I was looking for, I think, on this project. So it doesn't look just like everything's the same, so.
No, your designer did an excellent job, as far as hitting that farmhouse look and feel, that was my first impression, so no, kudos to them on.
Yeah, I mean, that'll, that'll attract all the other stuff that we, we all want, you know, in the city, you know what I mean? Like, the commercial's going to look at it and go, oh, this, this is a nice area, it seems like a good spot to, to come invest in. So, I mean, that's what hopefully the goal is here, so.
Well, I can say from my aspect, I, I appreciate that you put that effort into it. That's, it definitely shows here, and that's what we're trying to accomplish in that area. So, or at least that's what I would like to see.
Question too, being that they are rentals, with the different type of units, I'm assuming that's also allowing for different price ranges to kind of help accommodate a wider range of potential residents coming?
Yeah, I mean, the ranges could go all the way from 1,600 a month all the way to $2,800 a month, depending on the size or what your family needed. Obviously, in today's world.
And what the markets do.
Yeah, and, you know, and, and as the market change, you know, things are expensive out there to own today. I mean, the rates, you know, we're going to have a little moment of gut check out in the marketplace for some time. This is a good spot for, and again, I was just commenting, as Mike, we, we left my office quick, we were up here, you know, in the moment, like, it did not, you know? So there's, there's people that want to move up and out here, and it's, and it's not, you know, it's, we're not so far away either, you know what I mean, from everything else. So to me, it allows the opportunity for some other people, and maybe they're in between, maybe not quite ready to buy their house yet, but they're, they're scoping out, and this is, they want to live up here, they grew up here, maybe, they can stay here still.
Book and style.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, too, maybe not necessarily have to marry themselves to something right now that they don't want, and they can pick, pick and choose their time when they're ready to go do it, so. We did a townhouse development next to one of our apartments in Shoreview, and it's been a phenomenal success, and it's been full since the day we, like, switched it to rental. And the, and the type of, you know, people rent by choice today. It's just, I don't know if, you know, in the papers today, even discussing the percentage of, you know, apartments that are on the market, people like, you know, they would like to see more home building. But obviously, a lot of people, they want to be able to have flexibility, they want to be able to leave any year if they want to leave without having to sell it or go through the whole process. They want to be able to have options, or they might, you know, live more up north, and they might have a place down here that's, you know, closer to work. So we're just finding more and more rent by choice. The world's different, and, and even like I was saying, in our, our townhouse development in, in Shoreview, the, if, if I were to show you guys the type of renter, you'd be shocked at, you know, the income levels of people and what their choices and what they do and why. It's just all over the board, it's crazy. So that was a real eye-opener for me as a developer too, just to realize that, you know, it's not, it's not the typical stereotype whatsoever anymore, so. But, like I said, I, I feel like we have the right, you know, based on, we, everything we do is with a market study. We, we study it, we. We, we study it, we, we, we ask them to do it again, six months later, we'll have them do it again. And we'll keep paying for it till we know that we got it right because we don't want to be wrong. So, and we, we, we listen to the data, so.
I guess, you know, that kind of goes to my curiosity is, you know, I'm really concerned about the economy as everybody is. And, and I'm just wondering with your staff, do you have someone who's gone through something like this recession coming up before? In two thousand eight, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you feel prepared to do it again?
Yeah, but went, went through it, lived it, went through COVID, went through all, I mean, I remember presenting that, our concept plan on a, on a, on Zoom, you know, so, you know. But yeah, been, been through it. And, uh, I've been, you know, in private business for myself for, uh, twenty years now. So I've seen enough now and I've been in real estate business for a long time. I mean, it's, you know, it's a different kind of, you know, slowdown, I think, coming, but I, but yeah, we've, we've been through it. And that's also why we're too, we're, we're, we're phasing it, you know? We're, we're hopefully gonna do it in the right, you know, the right level at the right time, take, you know, and do it right, so.
Well, even, even in, even in my industry, I think when we saw, when we see the downturn in a couple of different phases over the last decade or two, that, you know, I think one of the advantages you have as a, as owning it and renting it, in the downturn, usually people aren't buying houses or they're, they've lost in the past, which is unfortunate. So having the rental units available, having them accessible, gives you better opportunity, even if there was a downturn where it's almost, I hate to say it, it'd become more attractive, but it may in those downturns.
And home building will go through its cycles, just like ours will go through its cycles and, you know, this is a very long-term play, you know?
Yep.
So, hopefully it's a, hopefully it's the right mix for the community, so.
Any other discussion? Or I would entertain any motions?
Oh, I just want to comment too, to the same as Karen, that I just like to make sure that it's accessible to a wide range of people too. Because I think it's beautiful, but I just would hope that it's not totally hot, high-end, that it'd be accessible too.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, we're market rate developers, so, I mean, we tend to do what the market is overall. So, I mean, I, I feel like we, you know, with our data that we research and everything else, that we think that we're in the right spot, so. It's always too high, sometimes it's always too low, you know, you, you know, but we think, you know, with what we're offering too, hopefully it's a community that people want to live in. That's really at the end of the day, that's, that's the only way I have success is if I get that right, so, yeah.
Nope, thank you very much for all your time. Any further discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, uh, approving the planned unit development, master plan amendment for the development known as Elevage EB second edition for resolution number twenty-two-two dash seventy-one.
I'll second.
Motion, and actually, Randy, if I can amend that, I think you read the seventy-one as the master plan with the second edition? I think those are two separate resolutions?
Yes, there's two resolutions that we need to approve for this project is my understanding.
Right.
Were you intending to do both as one or just one at a time?
I believe that you can only do one at a time, so my recommendation is to do one of each.
Yep, sorry, and that's where I was confused, just because you, you would said second edition with into the seventy-one.
Well, that's how it's, it's read, read here on the resolution. So a resolution approving the planned unit development, master plan amendment for the development known as Elevage EB second edition for property legally described as Elevage EB outlet A. That's the way the resolution reads.
All right, I apologize that I was reading it from the recommendation where it had worded differently, so.
Okay.
Sorry, motion and a second on, on the floor, all in, any, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries. That'll go before city council at the next.
The other resolutions as well.
There's two resolutions. The next one is the preliminary plat.
Yep, so we need two motions, one for each resolution.
Gotcha, before going. With that, I'd entertain a second motion.
I will go ahead and make a resolution approving the preliminary plat slash planned unit development of Elevage EB second edition for properties legally described as Elevage EB outlet A, resolution number twenty-two-one dash seventy-two.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
My apologies, that's the way it's read here on my packet as twenty-two-one. I will revise my resolution for twenty-two-two dash seventy-two.
Is there still a second for this?
Yes.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
And this will be heard at the November fourteenth city council meeting.
Thank you. Thank you again, gentlemen, for all your hard work. That, six, council update, council member bundle?
Good evening, planning commission members. I'm Brian Mundel, your city council liaison and I know how you, I love my long-winded reports. Unfortunately, I don't have one of those tonight. Council, not a whole lot has been happening, it's been kind of a slow month. We've taken care of a couple things, but they've been minor, not really relate to planning zoning. So what I have is, of course, elections are coming up, where I previously reported precinct number two, that that precinct, the voting location had changed, that was just for the primary. And so precinct number two will be at our saviors like usual. Uh, if you are looking for information on the candidates, their bios were in the city newsletter, the Fall City Newsletter, they're on the city website. And, uh, meet the candidates was held on October twelfth and that video is uploaded to the city's YouTube site if you would like to view it. Fall town hall meeting, November sixteenth, six o'clock. Be at the senior center, right next door, will come over here, it'll be a good time, come all. And I'll mention a little bit, we had two members of two other commissions resign this past month. Dan Butler from the EDA and Stacy Volker from the Parks Commission. If you, uh, many of you may know those names or know those people themselves. If you know them, they, you know that they have been around for a long time, they have served the city very well. And they did a lot. City council takes the blame for a lot of stuff, whether we like it or not, good or bad. But it's not just us that lead the city. We have many, many talented people on all of our commissions, including this one. And I'd just really like to thank all of you for your service towards our city. You are contributing, you are involved, uh, you are moving the city forward. And city council could not do the job that it does without your involvement, so I thank you for that. Any questions, comments?
Thank you for the kind words.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your service.
Well, thank you. Uh, if nothing else, then have a safe and happy Halloween. And I'll see you in a month, right before Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other business before we adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Say aye. Carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance.